Good morning, everyone. Today is Thursday, August 17th, 2017. We're going to bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. We're in the community room, Community Center, Sierra Room, at 8:51 East Williams Street, and also streaming on the Internet. Could we have a roll call, please, for the record? Sue, thanks.
Good morning. Supervisor Aboud, Supervisor Bonkowski, Supervisor Bagwell, Supervisor Barrett, Mayor Curl, have a call.
Thank you very much. Could we call our good friend Bruce Henderson of the Airport Road Church of Christ to get us started on the right foot today? Good morning, Bruce, and thank you for helping us out.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for a beautiful morning. We're grateful to live in a beautiful community, Father. I'm amazed at all the new development taking place in our area, Lord. And today, our supervisors will talk about some of that development. But as I see the news and as I read reports, I pray for another kind of development, Lord. I would ask that you help us to develop some of those things that you taught us long ago, that we can develop some of the basics like compassion and forgiveness and tolerance and unity. You taught us about faith and hope and love, and those are the things that need to be developed in our culture this day, and we thank you. I pray for these leaders, Lord. Bless the decisions they make, and may they serve as leaders and examples for all of us. We pray in the name of our Lord. Amen.
This is public comment time. The public is invited to say anything on any topic that is relevant to or within the authority of this body. We also take public comment as we go through where it's appropriate, and it generally is appropriate, on the agenda items. Sina, thank you for leading us in the pledge this morning.
Not a problem. So I quickly have public comment. My name is Sina Lloyd, Library Director, for the record. On Monday, the 21st, we will be having a about 80% eclipse here in Carson City, and I just wanted to briefly tell you what's happening in our community and how to stay safe during that event, because we don't want everybody looking up at the sun and going blind, because that can happen. So the library has solar glasses that are available at our event from 9:00 to 11:00 at the library on the 21st. The Friends of the Library have purchased some, and they're being shipped today. So they will have solar glasses available at the Browser's Corner bookstore as well. And I've also included safety information in the back about looking at the sun, because even with the solar glasses, you're not, sorry, you're not going to want to look at the sun for more than three minutes at a time, because it can hurt your eyes. So how do you know that your solar glasses are safe? It's going to have something on them saying that they meet the requirements of ISO 12312-2 filters. If it doesn't say that, then they're not safe solar glasses, and you should not look at the sun with those glasses. The WNC is also doing an event. Their event is at the Observatory, and that is from 8:30 in the morning until noon on Monday. If you have a telescope, you'll also want to make sure that you have a sun filter, because if you do not, you again do not want to look at the sun with that. Are there any questions?
I guess if you look at the sun through a telescope, you're going to magnify the effect of it, right? Or not? I don't know.
That is correct.
Okay. I thought I'd just wear a welder's helmet all day.
You could do that, too, as long as it meets certain requirements. Right. So if you don't have the ability to have solar glasses or a welder's helmet that qualifies, you can also poke a pinhole in any item. This is a 3D-printed Nevada that has a pinhole in it. And then you can put the sun here. It will reflect then onto a piece of paper, and you'll be able to view the solar eclipse without looking at the sun directly.
All right. Pretty cool. Any questions? You know, speaking of things solar and celestial, Saturday night at 8:45 in the evening, the International Space Station passed above us. And it's really fascinating to think, you know, it's the brightest thing in the system that you can see, and there are six people alive in that. You know, it's really pretty cool stuff. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Let's be safe, folks.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Any other public comment? Anybody? I don't see any right now, but we'll take public comment as appropriate as we go through the day here. All right. The minutes of July 20th, everybody had a chance to look at those? Motion's in order for okay on those.
I would move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for July 20th, 2017, with a previously submitted typographical correction on page 14.
Second.
There's a motion, second on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye and pushing yes or no. Yes. Okay. All right. Let's take up the agenda. We're going to be pulling, I think everybody's been notified of this, we're going to be pulling item 19, Echo. That's on a lump of land development agreement, so that'll be pulled for further staff and the interested parties' discussion on that before we bring it back. Any other changes that we know of? Acting City Manager, Deputy City Manager, CFO?
CFO.
What are you today, anyway?
Deputy CFO.
You're all of them?
Yeah.
All right.
No other changes, Mayor.
No, no, no. Board members, we okay? All right. Unless there's an objection, then we will take the agenda as published with the exception of 19 Echo, which we'll hold for later discussion. Let's all now move down and give thanks to our good employees, and so let's go down here and... This morning, we have a longevity award issued to a person who's a firefighter, who's been here for 25 years and who was recently promoted to Battalion Chief. So I'd like to call Tom Raw, please. Morning, Tom. How are you? Congratulations again on the promotion, and please accept all of our thanks from all of us up here for 25 years of great service to our community. And it's good that you see all the group back here, the people in blue, the firefighters in blue, shows good morale in the department. And we just want you to know how much we appreciate what you guys, what you do for us. I mean, people, you know, when they, when you want a firefighter, you really want a firefighter. And when you're sick and you got to have, you know, you want a paramedic there, you really want a paramedic there, and you want them there as fast as you can. So on behalf of all of us, thanks, and thanks to you folks back there. And so can we get a picture for everybody? And you want to say anything, Tom?
Thank you.
All right. Here, this goes to you. Come on. All right. Come on up. Come on, guys. Come on, everybody up here, firemen, come on. Let's go right here. Go right. We'll get you right here, and then we'll get all the group around us here. Let's see if we can get in, and Rachel will tell us where to go here. What do you think, Rachel? We going to be able to make it?
Just like that.
You're all over the place, Miss Darnes, and you're all over the place.
I'm not sure if that's a good thing.
I guess we're done.
He only had one group folder. That was my clue. That was my clue. Blue folder.
Let's take up the consent agenda. Any member of the public want anything pulled from the consent agenda? Seeing nobody, board members, anything for special consideration? Okay, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda. Thank you, Supervisor Bonkowski. Thank you.
I move to approve the consent agenda consisting of items 12 and 13.
Wait a minute, nine.
How about nine and 10?
Nine and 10.
We can do 12 and 13, too, at the same time. I'm kidding. All right. There's a motion to approve the consent agenda, items nine and 10, on the motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried. Thank you very much. All right. Let's now take up appointment to the Visitors Bureau. These are always very difficult. Who do we have here today? Is Trish here?
Mm-hmm.
Trish, there you are. Okay, hi, Trish. All right. So who are we going to do first here?
Jesse's going to go first. Jesse's going to go first.
Jesse's going to go first. Okay. Morning, Jesse.
Good morning, Board of Directors. Mr. Mayor, how are you?
I'm doing well. So you want back in the soup, huh? Another four years in the soup? Is that what you want?
I lived here 21 years, and I live hospitality, so it's in my blood.
It's in your blood?
And I like the team we have, and Joel, Karen, our chairman, Jonathan, I think we have a good bond, relationship, where we can make some good decisions that help bring transient, corporate here, new events. Now we have the culture as important part of our welcoming goal here. So Mark Salinas is doing a good job, his appointment, what Art's Council, you know, grants he's able to get. I think we have a good future ahead.
The question I'm going to ask everybody, or you and Trish, or, you know, if you have a dollar that you get from room tax for Visitors Bureau, how do you make a decision as to what events or how to spend that dollar at the Visitors Bureau? What's the, how do you do that, and what would you recommend?
As a hotel operator and a board member, I think ROI is what we look for, because if we are not getting a return on any investment that we put in, if it's 50 cents of the dollar or 10 cents of the dollar, we have an obligation to our property owners, we have an obligation to our community, because any public person can come in here and ask us on that first Monday, "Board members, you did this two years ago. We have not seen anything," or a manager or owner. So our first approach always is to look at where are we going to get the best return, you know? So investing in, last two years, you all know, we have Epic Rides, you know, great example. It has grown so big, we are talking about doing multiple events. When we talk about economic impact, this last month, no, two months ago, June, third week of June, we had an economic impact of $2.1 million. Where everybody been, wins not in only hotels, we're talking about restaurants, gas stations, you know, entertainment, people go to movies. So, and we know last year, there was no seats in the restaurants, you know, in downtown on that Friday or Saturday night. And also, the community gets energized when we bring people out of town. They feel great to live in Carson City. So second is approaches always been sports, you know, soccer, baseball. With the MAC, we have even more resource to get that, because I think that has been our primary generator of room nights. And when the economy is good, things happen good. So to sum it up, we divide it into parts as an owner and as board member, where the community wins and where the hotels win, and where we have to make everybody happy. Money's part of it sometimes. That's why we have culture now, because we can bring in cultural events, and we can get the young community in there, too, where they want to live here and grow here, and they want to make their families live here for the long term. That's what we need for a long-term growth of our community.
Well said. Thanks, Jesse. Okay, who's next? Okay. So I was ready about, and then we'll go like this.
Good morning, Jesse. What areas of tourism do you predict or now see as untapped for Carson City, and that could promote heads and beds? And tied to that is a secondary question, what shoulder season events would you like to see to extend the time spent in Carson City?
When we look at our demographics, when we put Carson City in the middle of Virginia City, Lake Tahoe, and Reno, what we surely lack, and we all know, is an event center or a convention space. But we need a big investment. We had conversations about it. Nugget was going to do one, you know, but it hasn't gone through. So that will be number one. Number two is, we are still not considered a destination market. When we go to the big travel shows and we take our flyers about Carson City, we list all the details, you know, we have, you know, TNT Railroad, we are in the middle of Reno and Tahoe. We don't want to be in the middle of Reno-Tahoe. We want to be known as Carson City. Last year, like, we won, two years, we won, in front of Juneau, Alaska, we won the best capital destination. We are not able to monetize that. Monetize means that we need one single attraction here, where people say, "Oh, I'm going to Carson City because it has lake or it has casinos." We don't have that wow factor, where people will come here and stay two nights. What we are, we, typically in summer, we are a overflow from Reno, Tahoe, you know, all that. When we have events in town, when we have the car show, when we have the Epic Rides, you can't find rooms here. When there's no event in our city, we're sitting on empty rooms. Second part, shoulder season. Shoulder season, seniors don't travel in winter or spring. And senior is a big part of our hospitality dollar amount. Baby boomers spend, you know, 30%, 40% nationwide. Same thing here. They don't travel. So who's going to travel at that time will be families with kids between, I'll say, 6 to 15. Indoor events, it's still an area we have not been able to discover, build on, and build events on, which we can generate the two-night. We cannot get three nights in winter, we know that. But we can have a Thanksgiving event, it's a three-night. We never fill up on Thanksgiving. We can have an event between Christmas, but before New Year, that week before Christmas, everybody has holidays. And, you know, as long as we do for that age group, which can bring people here, because they can, and if we do it in December, they can do the event and they can go ski for two days. So not only we generate money here, but even our neighbors do.
Good morning, Jesse. My question for you is, what has been the CVB's biggest successes over the last few years, and what programming still provides the best opportunity for improvement?
In terms of our achievement, I think the first achievement is our group, that we are able to make positive decisions for the community. And positive decisions mean that when we have an agenda item, we analyze it. And if we can't analyze it, same thing like you folks do, you make big decisions, you are the leaders of the community, we analyze what part of hospitality, what part of this community, that particular item is going to help or not help? Should we spend money on it? We shouldn't. So we analyze based on ROI, like I first said. So in our five-member board, we all come with a positive attitude, where we have one single objective, that is, being a welcoming business community, at the same time, being a welcoming host to the people who have never been to Carson City. At this, bringing Joel Dunn has been probably the number one achievement. He has energized the board. Mark Salinas, we have, like, social media was something we did not discover four years ago. Now we have trend reports, we are on Facebook, Twitter, and we look at what is impacting guests. If somebody's on an app, how long are they staying on our app? Are they booking rooms? If they are not booking rooms, why they are not booking rooms? Because if we have an app that we pay $1,800 a month, we want to know, is it working or not? So we look at every investment that we are doing, what returns it's getting. If it's not, then we go back. And same thing with saving costs. Yes, saving costs has been a big, moving our office to the downtown has been another big achievement, because before, people who would come to Carson City would never find the Visitors Bureau. They didn't know where the Visitors Center is. Now, we are able to give them information, we are able to sell merchandise, and we have a much bigger office. So we have a printer that we have a great lease on, even $10 a month, when you add up, you know, over 10 years, will save us. So we try to save every dime that we can reinvest back into the efforts to bring more people here.
And then the second part of the question was, what programming offers the best opportunity for improvement?
Programming, it's similar to what I replied to Karen, is that we need to, our issue is October through mid-December and January through mid-April, because in April, we have the two Comstock tournaments. Everybody comes here, and then Memorial Day comes. So that four-and-a-half-month period is always a challenge. It's not only a challenge for an owner, but it's also a challenge for our employees that work during busy time. We have to let some people go, because we are not renting that many rooms. Our front desk needs only one person compared with right now, when there's 40 arrivals and we have two people. So if we can put some events, and we have been trying, and I know we will be successful with the MAC, if we can put some events where we can get some more stays out of those months, I think that will be our number-one goal. One part I did miss on the first part was, there was a conversation here three, four years ago, because four years ago, things were very different. Conversation was federal per diem. I worked with Joel, with Congressman Mark Amadai, to put a word out there, that why are they raising per diem in Reno and Lake Tahoe? In Reno, they have a different per diem in July. We don't. Why, and we are right next door with the new freeway, we are like a community which is next, why we are not being offered a higher rate? When they're paying $140 in Reno, why are they paying $91 here? It was 89 back then. So we have been able to recover from the $89 per diem. It went to 91. Good news, starting October 1st, it's 93. So I think looking at opportunities and working on it. Yes, sometimes we are not successful, but that's how life is. We're going to try to get every dime out of where we can. At the same time, our hotels are investing more and more into their properties. Courtyard put a ton of money into their hotel. They have made a nicer hotel. Holiday Express, our hotel, we spent over $1 million in the last 12 months. It's a completely new hotel. Same thing with Hampton, with the new owners, they're putting, I think, it's not a single effort. It's like, you have to do so much in hospitality. It's marketing, it's customer service, it's having a good product, and at the same time, bringing more events. So I can talk for hour on this, but, you know, thank you.
Good morning. Okay. When looking through national tour brochures, few of any include Carson City as a stop to include historic sites. And given that our adopted plan for the downtown was based on historical, what do you think we can do to increase our national presence with many tour operators who promote the region but don't include us in their itineraries?
Okay. So I think we need to do is, we need to take a compass and put it in the center of downtown and take a 200-mile radius around it. You know, they'll go take, I'll do 400. They'll take us to Vegas, they'll take us to north of LA and some part of Bay Area, and then to Alco. Let's, you know, and then we need to see, that's our demographic. When we look, because we don't have an airport, people don't fly to Carson City. So that's our drive-in market, where four, five, maximum eight hours. Then we need to look at what our competitors are in that market space. Sacramento, even Salt Lake City, like, their downtown generates so much, because they have big temples, they have convention space. You go to the airport, you can't find a space to walk or sit. So we need to find out, what do they have that we don't have? Having a capital building where they're going to take a picture and put on Facebook is not going to bring us consistent tourists. We need that one thing where they say, "Oh, I went to Carson City because it has this." I'll give you an example. I just went to Greece three weeks ago. What do they have? History, right? There's a 2,000-year-old temple, or there's a 3,000-year-old archaeological site, and we go there. Here, we had, when I moved here 21 years ago, I was told, "Oh, people come to Lake Tahoe and Carson because the Bonanza was shot over in Incline Village." I'm like, "Okay, that's cool." We saw that happening for like few years, and then I didn't see any brochures. I'm like, "What happened?" Gone away. Our tastes change, but one thing that never changed is history. So we cannot create history anymore. Whatever we have, we have to promote that. So we have to look at opportunities. What is our best asset? Like Virginia City, the only thing they got is a mine tour or a small downtown. People still go there. We need to have, I think, a tour company come here, maybe even during summer for four months, and set up small tours, or maybe a two-decker bus. That thing works everywhere. You go to Greece, you go to London, you go to San Francisco, you go to any major metro. It has to be short, an hour. It has to be to the point where tourist doesn't get bored. Nobody wants to listen to reputation stuff. They want, "Oh, this is here because this happened here." That's what we need.
Just as a comment, I watched a webinar yesterday that dealt with the resurgence of downtowns, and one of the things on the video that kind of caught my attention was that your community needs to create selfie locations, you know? And if you think about our town, where are those places that people want to take the picture and put it on Facebook? And so just to...
And so just a general comment that it might be kind of cool to make, you know, photo opportunities throughout our downtown and to start, like you said, promoting them, getting it out on the, anyway, just a, it was really kind of cool. They had signs that were lit up, like, you could have a lit spot at night that said Carson City in the letters, and it's lit up, and everybody wants to take their picture with the lit-up Carson City sign. So just a, just something weird or different, but, yeah. Thank you.
That'd be good, because right now, we are living in a social media atmosphere. Yeah.
Jesse, thanks for applying again. I'd like to get into a couple of more controversial areas, because where I came from, controversy's lots of fun. There's recently been a lot of flurry of letters, et cetera, about where are the bikes? And what, you've already talked about the fact that recreation helps and history helps. Where would you stand on the idea of how we market with both of those? And what is your feeling about that minor controversy?
Well, I haven't seen much, but can you tell me what's the controversy about, please?
Well, one of our private sector people talked about, where are the bikes? Even though we have the nice bike downtown, et cetera. And then there were letters saying, oh, they're there, and that's not always the purpose, et cetera. And let's just be honest about it, it's Ronnie Hanneman of our chamber who asked that question, which of course, I always love to hear questions be asked, but there's been a back and forth about it since then with a lot of letters to the editor, et cetera.
John, I have lived in Carson City twenty-one years, and you folks have probably lived much longer here. From the day I came here to today, I do not consider, and I'll be practical, you know, because I'm a businessman, I do not consider Carson City to be bike-friendly. Because when the roads were built, when the things were designed, long time ago, nobody put that into the plan to make us a bike-friendly city. I went to Amsterdam, I'm just gonna give you an example, this was ten years ago. I got in a local train, eighty percent of the people over there travel with bikes. When you go to work, there's no parking lots, you see bike racks. So we are trying to do something that we should have done long time ago. We can't change that. The only place that I see bikes is Longview, Kings, you know, or Winnie. And Winnie is not made for bikes. There is no sidewalk, there's no bike lane. We are asking for trouble when we put bikes in front of cars and when we do not have appropriate infrastructure. Just having a mile-long bike lane in the middle of downtown, or Curry, or Stewart, is not gonna help. If I'm riding a bike, I want to bring bike from Washoe Valley, and I want to go to Fuji Park. I don't want to like, look, where should I go? There's not, we are not set up as a bike community. First, we need to improve our infrastructure, and then we need to promote it. We put all our bikes during epic rides in one side of the town because we know we can manage it there. We have police, we have volunteers who manage traffic because we can manage that. You cannot do that on a day-to-day basis in downtown, which is not built for it. So as a human, I think bike is a great recreation, you know, device because it's outdoor, it helps your knees, it's a cardio exercise. But at the same time, we have only designated areas which are made for that purpose. We have to first go back and see, are we gonna promote us as a bike-friendly community? Then we need to reinvest. And it will take thousands and millions of dollars because we do not have a space set up for that. First, we need to put sidewalks where people walk. And because, for example, on Winnie, if you were walking on one side of the street after you cross that big house, you are asking for trouble. There's no sidewalks. Our roads need improvement. Our, we have potholes after this, the corner of, that long, when you come off the Ash Canyon and you're going Omsby, that thing had potholes for three weeks. Nobody repaired that. That's like asking for an accident right there. So we need to first service our local residents when we talk about bikes. Even bikes is a small part of hospitality, but I think instead of having a controversy about something, we need to see where should we put our dollars first rather than creating controversies. We don't want to be like our nation is right now. We want to be friendly and nice and compassionate.
Second controversy. I'm curious as to how you feel about widening the, right now, the board works on, your board works on room tax, lodging tax only. But you mentioned in your presentation that people who are in the restaurant and bar business benefit, et cetera, et cetera. Have you considered, or would you consider, the idea of widening the financial support that goes into the Visitors Bureau? And I recognize that it's a lodging tax-heavy board, but, so there's two things there where the money goes, you know, there's the power as well. So you might be against it, you might be for it, but I'm curious as to your feelings on that.
So let me get that right. You are asking, should we bring, should we tax restaurants to bring money to the board or the other way?
Well, I'm not being that specific, but yes, is there a wider place to tap than, that is in the hospitality industry than just lodging is the question?
Well, within hospitality, food is a small part of it. And the only time it's a part of it, when you talk about casino environment. In our community, there are only two establishments that do that. Fendango, Goldust, let me add that, also Nugget, but the Nugget, the hotel is separated, it's not part of the same lot. So if you consider as a broader income generator, food is less than five percent in our business in this city because it's huge in airports, major metros, where it's a one-stop, you're staying there and there's five restaurants. So I feel that instead of going into a food business and levying more taxation, or getting money for the board, our board from them, I feel that we should look at opportunities where we get money from visitors that come here for hospitality is generating more revenue. And I don't know if you know that, there's a plan for two new hotels that, you know, that are coming. We do not have an extended stay hotel in town. So Courtyard is bringing a Town Place Suites in the back. The owner at Hampton is gonna add rooms. I think investing into newer, modern, and demand-specific establishments in hospitality, and then filling them up with the right mix should be our goal. Because what's gonna happen, John, is if we get money from any restaurants, if we put them more tax, they're gonna come back to us and say, okay, what are you doing for us? So every dollar has an explanation. Same thing, when you invest a dollar in somewhere as a public comment, I can walk in here and say, okay, what is that dollar doing for me? Because we all share every single dollar that goes into sales tax, room tax. You know, we're all trying to make the city work and every department work. It's like ten pieces of a puzzle. If everything comes together, we're gonna all be happy. So I don't think we need to look at areas where we generate controversy, we need to look at areas where it generate growth.
Well, to join you in that, I thank you for your comments regarding the addition of culture to the attractions that we have here. So thanks for bringing that up earlier. That's all I have.
Jesse, anything you want to add?
One thing I want to add is, I am blessed to be part of this community. I'm blessed to be part of a wonderful board for last, you know, two terms. And if I get an opportunity to be on the board again, I will do my best to meet the goals and the objectives that you and our board put into, you know, as, because you have a faith in me, and that's why you put me on. And I'll try to do more to make sure I'm doing my job. Thank you.
Well, I think your father is looking down on you and smiling and saying he's pretty proud. And I think the board members here, I don't, we were all on the board, but I, you know, kind of talking along with what John said, I never forget your dad talking back to, we were talking about how we're gonna finance improvements in North Carson Street, and he said, we gotta do that. And so I asked him, I said, well, where do you think the money's gonna come from? How are we gonna do that? And he said, that's your job. Never forgot. All right. Thanks, Jesse. All right. Good morning, Trish. How are you doing today?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
Doing well.
Good.
Sit in the middle there, sit in the middle, that's fine, that's good. And I think you know the drill, when you want to talk and you want to be heard, push the red button there. First of all, let me ask you, Trish, how's your dad doing?
He's good.
Okay. I think from all of us up here, give him a big hug and a welcome home.
Thank you.
All right.
I appreciate it.
All right. Trish, just a couple of things to get you started. Have you been through this before? I don't know what you have.
I have not.
Yeah. Well, we ask kind of the same questions of each applicant. And so to get you started off, get you kind of go and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to do this, and then I have one other question, then board members have some questions.
Perfect. So I'm Trish Chenoweth. I am the Sales Manager and do Marketing for the Convention Center at the Carson Nugget, as well as the Carson Tahoe Hotel, which was rebranded earlier this year, some of you might know it as City Center. Yeah. New name, same hotel. We've done some upgrades, but new branding on that, kind of connecting the Carson and Tahoe path was, excuse me, what Dean was going for on that. So I have several years in the industry of sales and tourism. Super excited. Thank you for the opportunity to at least speak to you about this. I love tourism and sales and the community here, the Northern Nevada community, and just bringing more tourism in. I think it's huge in this area. I think we're still underdeveloped, but have made a lot of strides here to really show people what we have here, not just gaming, even though I work in a casino, it's not just gaming, but the whole area, the mountains, the golfing, ski, everything outdoor, biking, hiking, as well as the fun with casinos. We have great restaurants, it's just a great area, and I'm excited to always bring people to that.
Thank you. Trish, my question to you, and then we'll have the other board members weigh in too, is if you had a dollar to spend through the Visitors Bureau, what's your thought process, what kind of thought process would you use to determine how you would best spend that dollar for the benefit of the Visitors Bureau? Or for its strategic plan? How would you do that? What thought process would you use? How would you go about determining how to spend the dollar?
I think the key to that is looking at overall what we need to bring here, and I believe it's actually in going to shows. There's a lot of golf shows out there, ski shows, and I think there's really untapped markets. Obviously, we're not gonna compete with a Vegas market on certain conventions and things that drive, you're not gonna bring eight thousand people here, it's not that market. But I think there's a lot of small groups out there that are really looking for a place where they're not lost, because they get really lost in those big areas, San Francisco, Las Vegas, Los Angeles. And I think it's important to bring them to a smaller community that really babies them and treats them like one of their own. And I think that's where dollars can go and find those small groups and bring them in.
John, you want to start on, go that way?
Sure, thank you. Thanks for applying.
Yeah.
I referred earlier to a controversy, it's really a mini-controversy, the question of bikes in the community and history as both attractions that bring people in. Culture does other things, events, as you say. But I'm curious as to your view of the situation regarding, there's been a few letters to the editor, et cetera, and articles written regarding, where are the bikes, et cetera? And do you see that as a deal that we need to look into at all through the Visitors Bureau or not?
Look into where they are? I mean, you have great bike pass here. That is a piece, I mean, we actually started a bike rental from our hotel. I don't know if you're aware of that, but we do that now for hotel guests or the community. I think it's an important key. I think there are sectors out there that do bike racing, bike trails, groups that do that, so I think it's an untapped market that could be huge here. But I don't know that it's a huge controversy. I mean, it's becoming a mini one, like you said, but I think it needs to be looked at, but I don't think it needs to be a whole focus.
Secondarily, again, something that might be controversial, you, how do you feel about the idea of widening the underpinning of finances that goes into the Visitors Bureau? And the board has oversight on that. It's mostly lodging-oriented now, and I'm asking basically, should the other entities that benefit from tourists coming here be tapped as well?
It's a tough question. I mean, markets I come from, it is based on hotel tax, and that's what drives our CVA, CCVB, those functions. You get into kind of a gray area and really push if you're taxing a restaurant that doesn't have that revenue that your hotel can have, a casino can have with a hotel. I think that's really pushing, can really be pushing on the smaller business. Yes, they do benefit from the tourism, but I really think that's a slippery slope to go after that piece of it. And I think it's been so traditionally hotel-tax-revenue-based that I'm not sure why that would change at this point.
Good morning. Thank you so much for applying.
Thank you.
When looking through our national tour brochures, few of any include Carson City as a stop to include historic sites. How do you think you can increase our national presence with many tour operators to further promote this region and include us in their itineraries?
There's a couple of things on that. One obviously is advertising dollars. Everybody wants your advertising dollars to be in their pieces. Another thing is actually working with state on tourism. There's a lot of opportunities there that you don't think about until you get involved with them and the different F A Ms. that they go to, different groups that they go to, going on F A Ms. with them to promote not only your property but your area as well is huge. Because I'm big on that personally. Yes, I do work for a property, yes, I do want to fill my hotel. However, I want the whole area full because it feeds in for all of us. So it's key to play for the whole area. And I think it's getting involved, I think the early bird gets the worm. If you just keep reaching out, you can get yourself out there, you can get yourself known, and then you can start building into all those pieces. And there's a lot of groups, bus groups, bike groups, gaming groups, ski groups, golf groups, meeting groups, there's all kinds out there that you can start delving into and getting yourself known in.
Good morning, Trish.
Good morning.
My question for you is, what do you believe have been the biggest successes for the Visitors Bureau over the last several years? And the second part is, what programming still provides the best opportunities for improvement? So what have we done well, and what should we be looking at to continue to improve?
I think we talked about this a minute ago, biking and your bike trails, I think that's become huge, epic ride, I think that's a big key to the area. I still think there's more you can grow on there. I still, I think everything that's used ends up underutilized in a key. As you grow it, you still want to grow it, and you still find pieces that can fit in there. It's a constantly turning circle. I think that's a great key. I think there's great golf here. I think there's great golf here, and I think that might be an area that can be tapped more. I think there's some great golf shows and, and ways to really introduce that to groups that haven't thought of this, that have thought of Vegas, or maybe of Reno, or obviously Lake Tahoe, but, but haven't thought of Carson, or it's not on their map. So I think that's one area to really, to really hone in on. And I think as well, we have a lot of things here, historical, that probably are, have not been touched on quite as much. There's other groups for that, that I just think could really raise tourism here and heighten some of those, those pieces and bring them in. There's always spots out there for, for tourism, and it's finding those niche markets and really addressing them.
Hi, Trish.
Hi.
I'm going to change my question a little bit because you've answered some of it already. So, the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority has expanded its tourism outreach to include arts and culture, as you know. So what would you like to see promoted in tourism that would, that is as yet untapped and would help shoulder season tourism?
It would help, I'm sorry, shoulder season?
Shoulder season tourism.
Because you have, obviously in our areas, you've got golf and ski, and we look at those in tourism and what I do as, as big pieces. And then you have this off-market. And I really do believe that a lot of that here is small meeting convention, because there's a lot that are not meeting in those key times that are shuffling into bigger markets, those mid, bigger mid-market, because the smaller markets aren't really going after them. And I think that's a huge piece that hits that shoulder. There's planning meetings, all kinds of different groups out there that are small, 200, 300 people that fit nicely in this, in this area and the size, hotels, convention space size, that each one of those that comes in brings a huge, they're not going to just stay in one place. They bring a huge drop into the area as far as dollars. So while I think ski and golf can still be improved, I think for those shoulders, you need to go after historical groups that like to travel for that. You've got bus groups, some are casino-driven, but some are not. You have religious affiliated bus groups, casino bus groups, just travel groups that like to do historic tours, or flower tours, or fauna tours, any of that. Those are, getting involved in the, the bus market can be huge on that and driving tourism, especially in the shoulder season, because a lot of times they don't like to be out when the, when the casinos are full and the rates are higher, and the hotels are higher.
Trish, anything you want to add?
Again, I just appreciate the opportunity. I really love what I do, and I think this is great. I think this city is growing and their tourism is growing, and I just love the opportunity to help it grow more.
Trish, thank you, and just passing back on to, to your folks over at the Nugget and the hotel over there, that, thanks for their continued investment in the community. And I think the rebranding and, you know, sprucing up of the, the old, I call it the City Center motel.
Yeah.
You know, it's where you and I grew up in this area, but we want to thank you for doing that. So, and, and we'll see where all this goes. So you now get to see how we make these hard decisions, and I'll tell you, today's a hard decision there, okay?
Thank you.
Have a seat.
Thanks.
See where we go. All right. Board, there's got to be a better way of doing these things.
I'll go first.
Huh?
I'll go first. So, once again, we have a situation where we have two excellent candidates. Their scoring for me is very, very close. The one difference I would say that I find between them is that I really like the direction that the Visitors Bureau has gone over the last three or four years, and I think that Jesse's been an integral part of that. And so my preference would be to give him an additional two years to continue on that same path. Trish, I think that you would be a great addition, but I just think in this particular case, I'd like to see, see us continue for a few more years along the path that we've, that Joel's been able to start.
I would have to agree with that. Both excellent candidates, absolutely. But Jesse has been part of a trajectory for the Carson City Culture and Tourism Authority, our new name. And he is a fiscal watchdog like none other. And I think that's been an important part, especially utilizing and including the cultural component going forward. And so I would like to see him have another couple of years on this board so we can really launch this the way we intended. And so my vote would go to Jesse.
John?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we expand the board to six and, and add them both. But since I know that motion will fail, I'm also going to go with Jesse, and, and I think Trish, I, I think she would do fine, but I've, I've seen Jesse working on this board now for years. And he is that fiscal watchdog that Karen says he is, and we'll give him another shot.
Well, Lori, I think that makes you and I irrelevant.
We're off.
So we'll entertain a motion to appoint Jesse for another two years.
Oh, I've got a, whoops.
I didn't hit the motion button. They'll say withdraw motion.
Where are we now?
Who's got the withdraw button?
Who hit the motion button?
Yeah, did you accidentally, so withdraw, there you go.
Okay.
Who's red? There you go.
All right.
I still don't have the motion button.
I'll just put it in for you, Karen.
Thank you. Okay. I move to appoint Jesse Dami as a representative for the hotel motel industry for a two-year term that expires July of 2019.
Motion, second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Both nay. All right, who we have? There we are. We're getting it. All right. All right, Trish, thank you very much, and thanks, Jesse. And Jonathan, why don't you come up here for a minute? What's going on in your life? I was at your shop last night, and now you've got a promotion and everything else going on?
We are, sorry, Jonathan Bower, Vice President of Ad Operations, Jacobs Entertainment. We are very busy. As you know, we acquired the Sands Regency, and we took over that operation on July the 1st. So that's keeping us pretty busy. And Jeff Jacobs, our owner, has, has bought the Sands, but he also bought up a lot of property on Fourth Street in Reno. So he actually owns most of the property from Gold Dust West Reno all the way up to the Sands. And so he's in the process of developing, or putting plans together to do a development along that, along that particular area. So that's keeping us pretty busy. So between here and Alco and Carson City. But I, I do like to add that, obviously, this, most of you guys know this, my last year as Chair of the Board, and I think my term is up in June. And I just want to say, it's been wonderful. It's been a, you know, when we, when I started getting involved with the Visitors Bureau Board, I think it was six years ago, it was a different type of situation that particular time. But it wasn't just the leadership of the Board, it was also the leadership of the Board of Supervisors, people in the community that were asking for change. And one thing that I tell the employees is that in order for you to be successful, you have to listen to the people that have a lot of the information, whether it's your residents, Board of Supervisors, people that work in the city. All people have opinions, all, all people have a voice. And once you start to incorporate everyone's thoughts, even if people that you don't particularly like personally, but have good ideas that will advance your, your, your strategic plan, that's one thing that, a culture of the Board that, that I'm most proud of. When we ask the questions of what we need to improve, we always want to stay focused on the fact that, John, you talked about controversy. Everyone, everyone has a good opinion. You may not agree with it, but the minute we start closing down doors and listening to people's voices, that's the minute we will fail as a board. And so one of the things that, that we've preached is to listen to everyone and to get the diversity of thought. And I think that, that would be my, my message to the Board going forward, that we never lose that. Because we can argue about, well, whether this event is good, or whether this tourism dollar, or how we spend the dollar, but we always want to make sure that we stick together. We don't have separate agendas. The only agenda is what's best for Carson City. And I think that's the most proud thing that I contributed to the Board, along with the rest of the Board on the Visitors Bureau, but not just us, the community, all of you. We've all had a hand in, in making this successful. So it wasn't just the, the people on the Board, it was a lot of people that, that made this successful. So I just want to thank you for giving me that opportunity. I'm definitely going to miss doing it. I've got a little less than a year doing it, but I'm going to give it my best as we continue forward. But we'll be very inclusive. So this thing we talked about, that, that will not continue. We will make sure that we, that we listen to everybody, and we'll keep that culture that we have.
Well said, Jonathan.
Thanks, Jesse, for, let me call you up there a minute. And by the way, go Cardinal.
That's right. We can go to game this year. I think they're doing pretty good.
All right, all right, all right. Sorry, thanks, Board, for indulging there. All right. We want to take a little break. We'll take, we'll be in recess for five or 10 minutes here. We'll be in recess for five or 10 minutes here. The board's invited us back to order. So Stephanie, you going to do that, Ms. Hicks?
Good morning. For the record, Stephanie Hicks with Carson City Public Works. We are asking for the Board's approval to submit an application to the Nevada Division of Emergency Management. This year, they have some additional funding that is specifically for the state of Nevada as a result of the two disasters that we went through in January and February. And so there are some components of hazard mitigation that we would like to submit for emergency generators and/or booster pumps for our critical infrastructure. There's approximately $4 million that's available for state competition. And in that, they are proposing that those communities that suffered during the disasters would get first priority. So we have a great opportunity here, and we're asking for the Board's support and approval to move forward with the application.
Matching money?
Twenty-five percent is required for match.
Okay. All right. Public comment? Board, are we okay? Board comments?
I'll make one.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve the submission of a grant application to the Nevada Division of Emergency Management for emergency generators and booster pumps.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay, carried. Thank you. All right, thank you, Ms. Hicks. Thanks. All right. Let's take up weeds.
Weeds.
And we're not talking about the other kind of weed.
Yeah.
All right. This is the weed ordinance. All right. Ready?
Good morning, Mayor and supervisors.
Good to see you. Good.
Yeah. Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Dan Anderson. I am the coordinator for the Carson City Weed Coalition. Today, I'm here to talk about our program, our goals, and our challenges that we are Just a brief overview. The coalition is a cooperative effort between private, local landowners, federal, county, city agencies, school districts, and nonprofit organizations. And our goal is to focus on noxious and invasive weeds within Carson City. Just a quick history. For many of the years, the coalition was housed under university cooperative extension. In 2014, the whole coalition was cut due to budget priorities. And in 2015, Carson City Parks and Open Space reintroduced the position of the coalition and the coordinator. Our main goals are to do a citywide coordination between every department, anyone who is doing any kind of weed treatments, spraying, removal, anything like that. Our goal is to increase our funding and our budget so we can help the community more. Community outreach and assistance is one of our biggest goals, is to educate and help people with these noxious weed problems within the city. So going on with that, community awareness is really one of our strongest tools, is to get people involved and educated in the severity of some of these weeds and what they can do to our natural ecosystems, native habitats. Some of the events that we have been putting on since 2015, we participate in Farm Days, the Carson River Work Day, Trout in the Classroom, which is a very big one with students from elementary schools and high schools. And then the Weed Warriors Education Classes, we are part of that. So just a brief overview. Nevada revised statute 555. Basically summed up, it requires every landowner to take control and manage noxious weeds on their property. If they do not do so, the state does have the ability to put a lien on a property to get that treatment done. Furthermore, we do have city ordinances that require any landowner to maintain weeds and the maintenance of their property from weeds, litter, and other stuff to make it cleaner and reduce fire fuels, fuel problems. This is just the basic map, kind of showing the areas that we're focusing on, the areas in purple, pink. Those are kind of our hot zones, our project areas that we're working on. All the green dots are the noxious weeds that have been mapped and located within Carson City. The inset map in the bottom right corner is in the area of Empire Ranch Golf Course. This is kind of the main outlet for all of the drainages within Carson City. So at this point is where you have all the runoff and all of the seed buildup that is eventually ending up into the Carson River and then traveling further downstream. So this is kind of our collective point where we've been focusing a lot of our work on. So the constant battle we're facing is with perennial pepper weed, hory crest, poison hemlock, musk thistle, and Canada thistle. These five weeds are the most common that we're seeing within Carson City. They are very difficult to control. It's expensive to eradicate them, and they're just very detrimental to all of our native Some that we're on the lookout for, yellow star thistle. We've had five reports that have all been eradicated at this point, but it's one of those that are surrounding us on every side. Douglas County, Lyon County, Washoe County all have yellow star thistle infestations, so it's close, and we're trying to stay on top of that. That also goes with Medusa head, which is an annual grass, also found Lyon County, Douglas County, Washoe County. It looks very similar to cheat grass and to fox tail or squirrel tail, but this is one that is extremely detrimental and in an extreme heavy, high-fuel hazard for fires. So as of right now, to date, we do not have it in Carson City, but we are definitely on the lookout. A lot of the challenges we face are, you know, we have a lot of increased recreational use. You have people that do bring in seeds from other areas. So it's a constant monitoring situation where we need to keep an eye on what is coming into the area. Another major challenge that we have is enforcement. Our code enforcement has done a great job with the time that they have and the resources they have, but we still need to get more enforcement on the ground to get people to take care of some of these issues on their property. And then, as everyone across the board knows, we do have limited funds. Everything we do is grant funded. We have a very minimal budget, but we do stretch it as far as we can to control what we can. So a breakdown of the history of our, kind of our financial overview. Every year, we do get $15,000 from CWSD, the Carson Water Subconservancy, which we are greatly appreciated for. That does cover most of the coordinator position. Everything beyond that is grant funded. So from 2009 up until 2012, 2014, we had funds through federal grants. The program kind of fell off between 2012 and 2014 due to lack of grant funding. The money was just not available. And then in 2015, the program was restarted by Carson City and Department of Parks and Recreation, Open Space. And that was through extra grant money from Department of Agriculture. And currently, we are working with some more funding through the National Fish Wildlife Foundation, BLM, and Department of Agriculture, again, has come up with some funding to help us with our program. So for future goals, as far as financially, we just constantly are looking for grant outreach to increase our funding. One thing we have found, when we lose, when we have a gap like we did in 2012 and 14, we lose all of our work on the ground. And when we lose that work, we're basically starting over when we get the money again. If you let these weeds go for a year, they will just take over completely again. And everything that you've done in the past, restoration-wise, is almost to a loss.
So if you had your wish, how much money would you ask for?
Well, I mean, $15,000 gets us steady. We would like to develop a crew. So if we had a crew of two to three people, we could help assist with private landowners and such, and I would say that would be close to another $15,000 to $20,000.
In years such as this one, which was a heavy rain year, I'm sure your weed scenario is probably worse than normal. So how does that fluctuate between your drought years and your moist years in terms of need for a crew and so forth?
Oh, it's tremendous. The amount of weeds and growth everywhere this year has been, compared to 2009, it's 10 times worse. We have more growth, we have rapid growth, and we have a lot of new growth. A lot of the times, in a standard year, this point in time, we would not be seeing new growth, but we are seeing it right now, where we have new second generation of plants and infestations that are coming up. So with a high moisture year like this, we are definitely facing a major challenge.
So in terms of a crew that needs to be flexible in good years versus bad, is it worth working with AmeriCorps or some organization like that in order to have some flexibility in terms of your staff?
Yes, absolutely. We have worked with AmeriCorps this year. We had them for a week, just two weeks ago. We had them onboard, and they helped us with some removal of thistles. But yes, that's a great tool to utilize. We've also used Dayton Valley Conservation District for hire. But again, when you start getting into these contract situations, it does get expensive. Compared to where if we had our own dedicated crew, we would be able to cut the cost in half.
Dan, the BLM funding for the last two years, is that restricted to just abatement on BLM lands, or are we able to use that for general abatement?
It's BLM lands and adjacent to. So anything that we have that is adjacent to BLM property or that potentially could affect BLM property, we're allowed to treat. So that covers a lot of our river corridor where we can get some work done.
And BLM doesn't do abatement on their property at this point, so that's why we have been able to enter into an agreement with them to fund some of this.
Yes. It is very limited what they have been doing.
And a lot of the weeds that we're seeing are coming from their property and our property.
Yeah.
And then my last question is, what herbicides or pesticides do you use? And do you try to use organic materials? Because I know that there was a debate maybe a year or so ago about being able to use Roundup anymore.
Sure. So a lot of the organic herbicides right now are all non-selective, meaning that they will kill basically anything they come into contact with. And they are very expensive, the organic are, right now. We try to use, we use a 24D, which is selective to broadleaf, which is effective on those five major issues that we're seeing. And it's a good clean kill that still leaves some of our native stuff behind unharmed.
Yeah. When you say, and I repeat the figure, 20,000 more, did you say? And is that atop the 15 or the 10?
That would be on top of the 15.
How much?
20,000, yeah. So in, if we go back in time and look at 2009, we were still getting 15,000 from the CWSD money, but we had an additional 20,000 then. And at that point in time, we were able to help landowners. We were able to treat everything within open space and parks, you know, properties, city properties. So that's kind of the line where we draw there, and we would be able to have a crew.
I'm sure your wish list would be higher, but 35 is what you're talking about then?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions of the Board? Public comment? Yeah, yes, sir.
My name is John Warpea. I'm an environmental--
John, say your last name again, please.
Warpea.
Okay.
I'm an environmental specialist with the Washoe Tribe's Environmental Protection Department. I'm representing the Washoe Tribe's Environmental Department today.
There you go.
Yeah. I'm here to strongly support Daniel Anderson's fiscal needs. I know how important those needs are. I manage the Washoe, the environmental department's invasive weed program. We have three parcels on Clear Creek that we manage for the same species that he struggles, which are such a chronic ecological problem, like bull thistle, poison hemlock. I actively treat and manage those parcels for those weeds, and I do that, you know, in the summer season. I've managed the program since, for about 14 seasons. And, you know, Daniel and the coalition are very important partner. I've gone out with him and showed him the needs that we have, you know, and we all, you know, struggle with, you know, financial resources to try to deal with this problem year after year, which has to be addressed year after year. So, you know, we have hory crests, and I mentioned poison hemlock and bull thistle, that our parcels are affected by the upper watershed, because there are some parcels that have bull thistle on them. And we're trying to work with landowners, because like Daniel had mentioned, that the seed does stream down and end up further down the watershed, and it just kind of snowballs. It's a snowball cascading problem. So we're just here to strongly express his financial needs and his educational and outreach and the other important things that the coalition does. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Let me ask you, you are Daniel, just a question, I mean, we asked this, you know, but I think for the public, it's somewhat important to know what the importance of weed control is in terms of the economy of your community and the health of your community. So if one of you wants to take that on, just express that on the record if you could. Why is it important? I mean, some people would say, you know what, weeds are a natural part of the environment. What are you doing out there doing all this? So tell us why it's important in terms of our community, in terms of our environment? Tell us what's important about it, and why their money, if you're going to get additional money, why would be well spent?
Absolutely. Well, these issues are, they're detrimental to native habitat, number one. We want to protect native habitat and ecosystems. And when you have invasive and noxious plants like these that invade, they just completely choke out some of that natural habitat that we have. Additionally, a lot of these plants break down and create extreme fuel hazards. The decadent material that, after the plant dies, will remain for a long time, and that just builds up thatch layers that can create extreme fire dangers. Some of the ones, some of these plants that are more aquatic, that grow along our ditches, creeks, and rivers, they'll actually, when they die, they can clog up and cause, you know, they could cause potential flooding hazards and snags within waterways. So all around, it's just, they're just not a good plant, because they, most of them are annual plants, so they are dying off each year. And that's why they build up this layer of, you know, dead material, whereas a lot of our native plants and grasses will stick around. our native plants and grasses will stick around.
Yes, I would agree with that. Many of the noxious weeds fail to hold soil like native plant communities do, and you have a lot of soil loss and ultimately, a lot of stormwater issues in Clear Creek. As these plant communities, if they do, if the noxious plant communities expand and exclude everything, you'll have increasing stormwater problems in the watershed, and that costs, you know, stormwater programs, increases their financial burden to deal with that. And the recreational aspect of having these community, these noxious weeds in particular, noxious meaning they're legally regulated by the Nevada Department of Agriculture, they just expand and exclude all the native plant communities, and that affects the recreational enjoyment of the trail users, bike, you know, bikers and bike users, horseback riders and things like that. That'll affect their recreational experiences. Because of these, you know, perennial pepper, we look at areas in Washoe County where they just totally, there's just huge blocks of it, exclude everything. So, and they become increasingly harder to control. Yeah, those are the issues I would point to. Thank you.
One other question, and I know, Lori, one other question. Organics. You mentioned organic pesticides kill everything. That must mean that non-organic kills everything as well, or am I wrong on that? I mean, tell me whether or not you believe we should be going towards, I mean, I get there's a cost differential, but why should we be going or not going towards organics for pesticides?
When I say that organics kill everything, it's like a Roundup. It's like a glyphosate, which is a chemical that will, it basically breaks down all the plant material of anything it comes in contact with. Whereas we still use a 24D or a TELAR product, those are chemically selective to target certain parts of the plant, where it won't affect some, like your grasses and shrubs.
That's all right. So my question's more if we were to give you, I don't know, $25,000 to have crews, are you actually able to have crews? Because it's my understanding, right now, we're having a difficult time with seasonal staffing, because unemployment is down and everyone's getting good full-time jobs. So do you see that as an issue, that even if we gave you the money, you'd have a hard time getting it done?
No, that's a great question. And it is hard. Seasonal work is hard to find, but I do think that it's possible. We have the equipment and we have the supplies to support an entire crew, or at least three men. But yes, we would have to staff probably through a staffing agency. And that would, there is definitely a high turnaround, and there is a high, you know, rate of employment where people will come and go. So there will be constant education. If we could get dedicated positions available, I think that would help, and have certified applicators that want to have the work. The work is there.
Because that was my second question. Wasn't there new laws passed about who can apply and, I don't know how close you have to be to the people doing the work? So maybe during the budget process, you can come with kind of a whole package that meets both the certification law and the--
Yes.
Yeah, because I think it's a multi-pronged issue.
It is, absolutely. And with the revisions to NRS 555 that passed this year, the law is, like you were mentioning, you have to be within an hour of your crew. So me being a certified applicator, I can supervise a crew as long as I can get to them within an hour, which is basically anywhere in Carson City, I could get to if there was an incident. And that was the reason behind that.
Yeah, I don't imagine this would be easy, but if you're going to bring that kind of a budget to us, if there's any way that it can be quantified, how much of a problem the stormwater runoff problem is if you don't do this versus if you do do this, that would be nice. We just had to raise our stormwater. I don't think it would make a huge dent in that, but I'd like to know, because that would certainly justify more money if you can tell me how it really impacts exactly. Because if you can spend, I don't know, I'm making this number up, $50,000 and save $100,000, then it becomes a much more interesting proposition.
Does Open Space have this on their radar?
For the record, Ann Bolinger, Open Space Administrator, yes, we do have it on our radar. When the program, when Cooperative Extension lost the program back in 2014, and there was one year with Carson Water Subconservancy talking with us about that they had their annual $15,000 every year and what to do, that's when I, at the time, talking with our parks directors, say, can we bring this program at least housed under us? And so, yes, we are very intimately involved, but Daniel works across the department, across the city with private property owners. We just give him a place, an office and a phone to sit. And we, in our budget, we do put up $5,000 upfront if needed to help cover his salary with the Carson Water Subconservancy District. How I have budgeted in the past is at least $10,000 will go towards his salary. $5,000 can help private property owners as a match. We don't want to just, we don't have enough money just to say, here, we can control your weeds, but if you help us, we'll help you. And then in our budget, we do allocate $5,000 if needed.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Ann. All right. Anything else? Any other public comment? John, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
Good to let us chat with the experts here. Well done, Daniel. Okay. All right, folks. All right, let's take up the next item. This is potential signing of a project agreement from the State and Nevada Division of State Lands, providing a $200,000 grant for trail improvements on the north end of Prison Hill Recreation Area. Ann, you're doing this. Before you do that, let me just make a disclosure that State Lands reports to Director of Conservation and Natural Resources, and I'm related to that director, who's my son. And this is, I don't see a conflict here, I just want to disclose that, so I'm going to disclose it and vote, because this is just acceptance of a grant. All right?
Yes, thank you. Again, for the record, Ann Bolinger, Open Space Administrator. Thank you, Mayor, Board of Supervisors. I realize I could have easily put this on a consent item and you could approve it altogether, but I wanted to give this opportunity to say we're bringing in $200,000 to Carson City.
I thought it was pretty good. You want to brag a little bit?
I do.
That's all right, brag.
And this is just another step forward for us to improve the whole trail system in Carson City. Both this item and the next are focusing on Prison Hill Silver Saddle area. And so this grant, through the recreational trails program, we are required to provide a 20% match, which is approximately $51,000. It is budgeted. The deadline on this grant is three years from now, so 2020. We hope to construct it in 2019. Next year would be ideal, but the city will be busy working on all our FEMA projects, so this one will be bumped out for one year. Any questions?
Okay. Good bragging rights, that's all right. All right. Board, anything? Public comment? Anybody? Lots of good stuff, and we're going to hear some more good stuff in a minute. All right, let's take a motion. Who wants to do it? Who wants to brag with a motion?
I'll do it. Okay. I move to authorize the mayor to sign the project agreement from the State and Nevada Division of State Lands, providing $200,000 for a new trailhead and trail improvements on the north end of the Prison Hill Recreation Area.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye. Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous. Thank you very much, Ann. Now, take up the next one. This is, we're getting a potential BLM SNPLA grant for 1.8 million.
Yes, thank you.
Really, that kind of money?
It's really amazing, and I have--
So tell us about it.
I had the privilege to sit in on this last round of grant applications, which was round 17. They had 15 applications, and to this category, Parks Trails Natural Areas, a million dollars is reasonable. So we completely expect and anticipate to submit another grant next year. So that will be for Silver Saddle Ranch. But this grant in front of you is for a little more than $1.8 million for the design and construction of three non-motorized trails, linking the Fifth Street Trailhead to Silver Saddle Ranch, linking the Mexican Ditch Trail from the south side of Carson River Road to the south side, finding a safe passage. It can be done now, but it is not safe. And then possibly a third trail linking Carson River Park along the river and Buzzzy's Ranch to Riverview to the north. That one will take some more environmental studies on our end regarding wildlife, how to manage the livestock, various components, so that one might be a year delayed compared to the other two trails, but all of them are very exciting.
So just to be clear, it looks like we're going to be, we've got that money, or--
When you sign it, we will have the money.
Okay. All right. Well, it looks to me like, you know, when we do this, I know there's always more to go on, but that'll, you know, that'll be a big improvement to Prison Hill, Silver Saddle Ranch, and the wetlands area we have out there in Carson River Park. It's a good deal. I mean, that'll be a wonderful area where people can go enjoy nature out there, so. All right. Board comments? John?
Yes, just thank you. And connectivity is a huge matter when it comes to trails.
Yep. All right, anything else? All right, we'll take a motion.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the funding agreement from the Bureau of Land Management, Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act, providing $1,843,685 for the design and construction of non-motorized trails as part of the Carson River Trail System Phase II Ranch Connections.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thanks. Go get some more money, too. That's good, Ann. Thank you very much.
Yeah, just keep going.
Keep going. Yeah, keep going. All right, we ready to take up the next item? Iris, going to do nuisances?
Yes.
All right. Nuisance ordinance. She's got the intubable Mr. McCoy with you today. That's good. All right.
I do, and Iris, y'all, for the record.
All right.
All right, so today is not going to be a major overhaul. Just a few changes. Would you like me to just run through them?
I think, yeah, give us an overview of what we're doing here and then run through the changes. And then we, I know we've got some questions we want to ask you about property managers and things like that, so tell us about it, and then we'll have a discussion, okay?
Absolutely. So as you all know, we made some changes in January, February, and this is basically just to refine some of that. It's nothing, nothing major. The property manager issue, I think, has been resolved, but do you want me to start with that?
Yeah, I want to deal with that, because I know that there are some who in the audience and that, you know, that are concerned about the liability of property managers and what this proposed ordinance would lay on them. And it seems to me like there should be a way around that, but you tell us what your legal opinion is. Iris, go ahead.
So you all have the late material, right? So in the late material, I did speak with Supervisor Bonkowski, and we are actually going to delete the property manager from that section, not the definition. I'd like that to remain in there, if you're all okay with that. But as far as on page--
Nine?
Page nine, that is going to be stricken by interlineation. I will correct that for a second reading.
So that would say any owner, occupant, or other person who has charged or controlled a property?
That's correct.
All right.
So going back--
All right. All right. Any other changes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So page one, paragraph one C, I'd like to add in the word "structures" after lodging, and that's just to keep it consistent with paragraph two. And then the next change is, of course, property manager that you saw on page six. Tell me if I'm going too fast, because there aren't a lot of substantive changes, so I didn't, I don't need to read the entire thing unless you want me to.
I missed the last, who wants to change? Where was that, please?
So six, number 38, it's just to put the definition of property manager--
Oh, I see what you're saying.
--in the definitions, but I'm not changing it from what is proposed. Page nine, as I had said before, we're striking property manager from paragraph one. Then, page 10, just adding some additional language to clarify what the enforcement official can do. Then, page 13, on the late material, I did delete a couple of paragraphs that I need to research a little bit more before we propose that. And then page 14, which is really the last substantive change, it's just clarifying the methods of service. I wanted to make sure that was absolutely clear, that we needed to serve things in a certain manner, and this is the correct way. And that's it. So if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead.
So can you please clarify, did you say on page 13, section 10, that you needed actually more time to determine whether or not we're going to strike language?
No, I'm sorry, I didn't word that very well, but the late material strikes two paragraphs from the original material that was proposed. The original material is proposed, I need to research a little bit more before I can see if we put that in there. So that's why I took those out, and that was for the civil judgment. That is provided for in the Nevada revised statute, so it doesn't, it's already there. I just don't know if we should repeat it in the code as well.
Whether to carry it through into the ordinance--
Yes.
It's not necessary, because it's already in the statute.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Other questions? Iris or Kevin? I don't see any. Let's take a public comment, I think. Okay. Anybody else? I think we solved some issues today. Well done.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's in order. Somebody want to make, Supervisor Bonkowski?
I move to introduce on first reading, bill number--
120.
Thank you. An ordinance amending Title VIII, Public Peace, Safety, and Morals, Chapters 8.08, nuisances, and 8.09, enforcement provisions for nuisances. And we are approving the late material addition that was provided before the meeting today with changes to Section 1, Item 1C, adding the word "structures" after the word "lodging", and change to Section 4, Item 1, deleting the two words "property manager."
Second.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried. Thanks to both of you.
Thank you.
Mr. McCoy, thank you for, you and your staff for all you're doing on code enforcement. I know you folks are working overtime. It's much appreciated, so let everybody know over there, okay? Thanks, Kevin. All right. All right, let's take up 15 Bravo. We'll open a public hearing, and this is a public hearing, to approve or discuss the approval of an abandonment of public right-of-way from Carson City to abandon approximately 30,000 square feet of public right-of-way along Hemlock Street. Hope, good morning to you.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Board. Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. The Board may recall, you considered this request at your meeting in February 16, 2017. The Board continued the item with direction to staff to reach out to adjacent property owners to ensure they understood that the abandonment of the right-of-way would result in the land being absorbed into their property, with the attendant responsibilities to maintain this land and pay taxes on that land. The city's real property manager sent letters to the effect to the property owners on February 21, 2017 by certified mail. I will note that on page 204 of your typo, which is the second page of the Grant of Non-Exclusive Public Utility Easement, there is a typo. The wording should refer to the misconduct of the grantor as opposed to the grantee. Should this abandonment be approved, the staff will make that correction. And thank you, Commissioner Bonkowski, for recognizing that error, so we could correct it before any action by the Board. The Planning Commission did review this request for abandonment at its meeting of January 25, 2017. And I do have on the screen a picture of the portion of road to be abandoned. You'll see the portion of road, the road's only one block long, so it's not creating a disconnect in a road system. The Planning Commission did review the request at its meeting of January 25, 2017, and recommended approval based on the ability to make each of the seven required findings and subject to-- to conditions. The applicant is the city's real property manager, Stephanie Hicks, who's present. I'm happy to go into more detail, but given this is your second time with it, I'll limit it to that and answer questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Supervisor, Supervisor, about?
Hope, what was, were there any objections from those that will absorb the abandonment into their property with the increased taxes and so forth?
My understanding is no, but the real property manager was the one who, who sent out the correspondence under her name as the, as the city's real property manager as opposed to the Community Development Department. She sent them certified mail, and my understanding is the only inquiry she received is from the vacant land where the church has an entitlement. He wanted to know the timing for the abandonment, but I'll let Stephanie correct me if I describe that incorrectly.
Ms. Hicks?
For the record, Stephanie Hicks, Real Property Manager. That's correct, we did send out the certified letters and received no other responses back than the applicant's representative for the church, for the previous church approval, and just curious about timing.
Anybody else? Public comment on this one? I don't see any. We ready for a motion? Motion's in order.
I move to approve an abandonment of public right-of-way application from Carson City Public Works, property owner city of Carson City, to abandon approximately 30,297 square feet of public right-of-way, an area 60 feet wide and up to 508.94 feet long, known as Hemlock Street, between Silver Sage Drive and Center Drive, on property adjacent to APN 009-236-02, 009-236-03, and 009-236-04, 009-239-03, and 009-239-04. Based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report, and authorize the mayor to sign the order of amendment.
Abandonment?
Abandonment, excuse me.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Pardon me?
That's okay.
Discussion, discussion's in order. Well, I poke yes anyway, but discussion's in order.
I just wanted to thank staff for working with me on this, I know I was kind of a pain on it.
Okay, on the motion? Passed, so it shows up on the screen. You know, I was gonna, I apologize for cutting off...
All those in favor, we have to say it out loud, yeah.
Supervisor Bonkowski, but I'd just like to thank, and not just our staff, but the rest of our board up here, the Board of Supervisors, for the way that they work with staff to look at these things. You know, it's a real pleasure to have a lot of different sets of eyes looking at these things, and, you know, where we can address some of the matters before they come up here, and it's not acrimonious, it's just a way to try and get things done, so my hat's off to my fellow board members, and I'm not including myself on that, but I am including the staff and all of you, that's okay. All right, all right, let's take up...
We need to do it publicly. Mayor, can we have a vote on the record?
Oh, I thought I did, didn't I?
No.
I'll take it again. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose nay? All right, on the record, thank you. All right, see that? That's what I was just talking about.
See, we pushed buttons, but no...
I pushed a button. All right, all right, let's take up the next one, 15 Charlie. This is, there's a public hearing on a potential abandonment of a public right-of-way application from Carson City School District to abandon approximately 7,524 square feet. This is on Corbett Street. You want to take us through this one?
Thank you, Mayor Hope Sullivan, Planning Manager. I have on the screen a picture of this, and this is in your packet as well. It's a portion of Corbett Street that's actually a dead end. If you look at it on paper, it looks like it connects to Stort Street, but given the grade differential, it actually does not make that connection. The school owns both sides of this property. Pioneer High School is to the north of the, of the right-of-way, and their parking area is to the south. The school is seeking abandonment to be able to do some parking enhancements in the area. The Planning Commission considered this request at its meeting of July 26, 2017, and voted six to zero with one vacancy to recommend approval based on the ability to make each of the required seven findings and subject to conditions of approval. Present today representing the school district is Mark Johnson, with him is Darren Berger, architect, Brad Squelch of Manhard, and Chris Baker of Manhard. I think this is, it's a pretty straightforward application, I'm happy to answer questions, and clearly the school district has a crew out in the audience to answer your questions as well. Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing, you don't have to speak, looks like things are moving that way. Board members, any questions? Everybody okay with this? All right, is, for the school district, my father used to tell me in my early days as practicing law, when it's going your way, when the judge is going your way, sit down and be quiet. All right, we'll then have a motion? Motion's in order.
I move to approve an abandonment of public right-of-way application from Carson City School District, property owner city of Carson City, to abandon approximately 7,524 square feet of public right-of-way known as Corbett Street, on property adjacent to APN 002-138-17, 002-153-04, and 002-153-11, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report, and authorize the mayor to sign the order of abandonment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Carried. All right, let's take up another, for another public hearing, this is item 16. This is a public hearing on the city's intent to issue general obligation or limited tax sewer bonds additionally secured by pledged revenues in a aggregate principal amount not to exceed $6 million for the purpose of financing sewer projects for the city. Nancy, you want to take us through this? I mean, I think we've had this one a lot, but...
Right, this is just the next step in the about six-month process or more. So NRS requires that we hold a public hearing before the sewer bonds can be issued, and notice of this public hearing was published in the Nevada Appeal on July 9, 16, and the 23rd. And this is just to take public comment, and the next step in the process will be the first reading of the ordinance in the second meeting in September.
All right, this is a public hearing, anybody want to weigh in on this one? I know that we've had a lot of discussions about this, I don't see anything, so we'll close the public hearing, bring it to the board, motions in order.
No motion, just a public hearing.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, just a public hearing, okay. All right, let's then take up 16 Bravo. This is a potential grant agreement between the state and Nevada on the CDBG matters. Who's taking, who's doing this one? Nancy, you doing this one?
I'm back, yeah. Before we do that, we do have an abstention, disclosure.
Yes, I do. And I have to read this. NRS 281A dot 420 requires me to disclose a conflict of interest and abstain from participating. I have a disqualifying conflict. My wife works for the Governor's Office of Economic Development, administrating HUD funding through its state-administered CDBG program. My wife is working closely with Carson City on this item, and since this substantially affects her employment, at least some, if not substantially, this matter before me is affected by my relationship, therefore it's a disqualifying conflict. I shall not vote or involve myself.
All right, any other disclosures? Don't hear any? Ms. Paulson?
All right, so this is to approve a grant agreement between the city and the state of Nevada Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, and to receive HUD funding through an allocation from the state-administered program. The agreement will provide the city with annual funding in the amount of 15.48% of the total CDBG funding awarded annually to the state, adjusted for admin that the state receives and technical assistance funding. This results in 400, a little over 474,000 for fiscal year 18 funding cycle. Of this amount, 10% can be used for city administration, and that's $47,461. I wanted to thank Anna and Jean, I don't think they quite made it yet, for their, all their work on this transition. I looked back, and this, the amount of funding for fiscal 18 is more than we've received in the last 10 years, so, let's see, back in April, the Board already approved funding recommendations of 294,000, and after approval of this agreement, staff will work with the state to determine how to allocate the additional funding of approximately 133,000. And once they finish that process, we'll bring it back to the Board for final approval.
Well, as I say, this is kind of proof of the puddings for jumping in on the state allocation process, so, all right, any members of the public weigh in, weigh in on this one? I don't see any. Board members? Motion, or you want to talk?
No, talk.
Go.
Nancy, could you go over our procedures for determining how much of the allowed administrative funds get used and how they get used? Because I know that this allows up to 10%, but we have a practice of going through and trying to determine the actual cost for implementation on this, so we may not use the entire 10% amount.
That's correct, we'll only use what is needed, and it will be reimbursed based on the actual time spent by the grants coordinator on the CDBG program. And there may be some other minor, you know, office supplies or something like that, but if there's additional funding left over, that can be allocated to programs as well.
Exactly, thank you.
Good move, all right. Anybody else? Motion's in order. Supervisor Bagwell, go.
I move to approve a grant agreement between the state and Nevada Community Development Block Grant Program and Carson City, Nevada, to receive U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development funding through an allocation from the state-administered CDBG program.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay? Carried. No, there was an abstention, right, not a nay, but an abstention, right, okay. All right, excuse me, John, I get on a roll and I forget that you abstained there. All right, let's the next, take up the issue on 17. This is for software license agreement and a maintenance agreement with Pioneer Technology. Ms. Meriwether, good morning to you. How's the clerk recorder today?
Clerk recorder's doing great.
All right.
Keeping busy, too.
Good. So tell us what, just kind of give us the history, I think we've all read some of the backup stuff here, give us the history, what's going on, then we'll see where we're going, okay?
Right, thank you, Mayor. Sue Meriwether, for the record, I'm the clerk recorder in Carson City, and with the Board's approval, my office would like to move forward with purchasing Pioneer Technology, Pioneer, oh, excuse me, Pioneer Technology recording software. And we all know that ADS is, will be phasing out, and my office believes that it's very important for us to move forward as soon as possible with, with this contract, so we could move on to the next contract of purchasing voting equipment. I've been working closely with Dan, and Laura, and Eric, and they have agreed, or reviewed the agreement and all the exhibits, and are very satisfied with what you have presented to you today. I have also been in close communications with the technology part of the agreement, those who will be involved, Pioneer, Mark Carter from ADS, or Advanced Data Systems. And I've also been in touch with Mike Farrell, who is with Precision Document Imaging, who is our, will be our support for AX, which is the, the vendor who supports the images for most of the city, that they're stored in their AX system. And I can explain that a little further in a minute. These are key players in the data and imaging conversion. They have confirmed that all the city apartments will continue to have access to all the data and images. It was brought to my attention last week that the assessor had some concerns with the links of images, our images, in his website. I immediately contacted Precision Document Imaging regarding this, these issues with the assessor, and they came up with a solution and guarantee that the link will not be broken with the assessor while it's still using ADS, and no additional costs will be involved with the city in any way. The Nevada recorders have been worked, have worked as a group, searching for the best available software to accommodate the needs of their counties. Five of the 12 counties that we're searching for new software vendors are going to be going with Pioneer Technology Group, and we're hoping to move forward. We're having our first meeting next week. The company has proven that it offers tried and true product used by many recorders nationwide. Their reputation for product and service is exceptional, and we are very excited about moving forward with this company. We look forward to the new, the next generation of recording technology, and we feel that Pioneer Technology Group offers a friendly system that will not only benefit the recorder's office, but other county offices, and also the public that uses our website. Thank you.
Okay, all right, there's some questions up here. Eric, why don't you come on up while we're here and sit down there, so, before we get to questions. Eric, let me ask you, from a technical standpoint, explain or just give us an overview of how this integrates with ADS, or how does the ADS going out of business affect what's going on in Ms. Meriwether's department? What are we doing here?
Eric Von Schimmelmann, Chief Information Officer with the city. So, yeah, ADS is going out of business as of December 31, 2019. So we have about four core packages that we've, need to replace in the next two years. Clerk Recorder's application is one of those four core, it's clerk recorder, assessor, treasurer, and a small portion in the sheriff's office. So the clerk recorder system...
So when we go through the, when the assessor comes with, with the, you know, with the replacement, that does or does not include the other packages?
It does not, so actually, I just raised over here, we're in the middle of building the RFP to go out for the clerk recorder, or the treasurer and assessor system right now. I'm developing that, and we will be going out for a formal RFP on those two systems. Those two are very closely tied together, because everything starts with the assessor rolls over to the tax collection, so those two have to go together. The clerk recorder system is just a recorded document on the side, so it doesn't have to be the exact same software or tied to it, it just has to be able to have a link or some kind of interface between the two. So that's what we're looking at here, so that you can access, so Dave's, Dolly, the assessor's information, when he goes in there, he can actually see the actual recorded document, as long as he knows where that's at, we can create a link or some kind of interface to that recorded document. So I've spoken with Landmark a couple times, and we've talked about different ways to make that interface happen, so, and we're working on different solutions for that, depending on where they store their images.
And the dollars associated with this package are budgeted?
Yes, this is budgeted in the CIP for this year and next year. I've split it over two years.
All right, I got lights going on this way, so Karen, Brad, and then John.
With regards to this, Sue, Eric, either one of you can answer this, probably. In terms of maintenance, the maintenance cost for Landmark is more significantly than is ADS, why?
Why?
ADS is cheap.
Because, because ADS is very cheap. We're having to increase all the costs across the board for any of their systems. ADS has been very good to us over the years, keeping their costs down. For the clerk recorder package, I believe right now in my budget is $6,000 annually for their items. When we go to this package, it'll be, was it just under 14, or right around $14,000 a year, so we're gonna have to increase about $8,000 per year. So in CIP, this first year, I included that. Ongoing, I will need that added back into our IT software maintenance line item, the additional $8,000 roughly.
Is there added service that they're providing? I guess that's my question. I understand that ADS kind of undervalued their, their services, but nonetheless, is there additional services being offered with regards to that price tag?
Well, with the newer technologies that they're going to be providing us, it's going to greatly enhance the public's capability, so that's where we see the value. Just newer technologies, it's going to be easier for us to support on the back end also, as we remove some of the older technologies, our AS400, that's my goal, is to get rid of that, move that, all those, anything that's on that system, off to a more current platform. of that, move that, all those, anything that's on that system, off to a more current platform.
Eric, you mentioned that you had spoken to Landmark on a few occasions. Are you comfortable, after speaking to them, that they actually can resolve any issues that come up with imaging between the assessor's website and the recorder's programming, and that they're not just saying that to get us, get an approval on the contract?
I mean, I can only go by what I've spoken with them. They know about, our current imaging system is Documentum. So they were looking at how to interface with Documentum, but they have their own proprietary imaging system. But they do this nationwide, so I believe we'll be able to, and they know we're working with ADS. So there's multiple counties, so I think we'll be fine going forward.
And you've spoken to Dave, so you are aware of what his concerns are, and you feel like that we can address those concerns?
Yeah, I, I've actually just got to have a meeting with Dave, so I understand his concerns. I've got concerns with it, too, but I understand how their technology works, so it just may be more work on the back end. Like Sue said, she spoke with Precision. It's, Mike Farrell, he used to be in a different company. But they've come over, there are support now for the current Documentum imaging system. So I haven't spoken to him, I've been buried in these, the RFP process right now for the CAMA and property tax, but I believe that Sue's spoken to him, and we'll be good to go with that.
Yeah, my concern is voiced to Sue on this one earlier about if a company in this field can go out of business, you need to look down the road and see what the new company can do. I'm flabbergasted that anybody's going out of business, but maybe it's the fact they didn't charge enough, but they're going.
ADS, I've, just so you know, I've worked with them for over 30 years, I've logged in with the city for 27. They've been city for, since early 80s, so it is a locally owned company, so I realized this early on, that eventually they're going to want to retire, that it's.
I understand, that's being facetious to a degree, but in this field, it's a growth field, I understand that there are reasons that people go out of business. But at any rate, I'm concerned about how large this company is and what it can do, and how long it's going to be. I mean, we're looking down the road a long ways with this, I would assume. So anybody have been able to check into that?
I could tell you that they are approximately covering 10 states right now, and probably over, close to 40 counties. That's not gonna guarantee that they're not gonna go out of business, but I think it's a very strong company. I didn't look into the market on them or anything like that, but they're very, they have a very well-known reputation. I've gone to conferences where they've, you know, been there, and everybody that I've talked to, and, you know, they've been in business for over 10 years. So, I mean, I feel very comfortable moving forward, sir.
Thank you.
You know, the ADS story is kind of an interesting local story. I mean, it's kind of developed by Mark Carter, who grew up here, you know, and he did very well with it, and I think, you know, I agree with John, you know, these companies come and go, and you want to be careful about that, you know. Mark, I think, wants to take some time. And I, because I, one of the reasons I think, you know, it's been cheaper is because he's been spending a whole lot of his own time doing this stuff, and just working with us because he grew up here. So, anyway, all right. Anything else? Public comment?
No, I would like to add to that. I'd like to thank ADS and for all their services for these years. They have given us excellent support, and it's been wonderful working with them. It's gonna be tough.
Public, anybody want to weigh in? Technical stuff? Board, we okay? All right, let's try a motion. Supervisor, about, go.
I move to approve the software license agreement and the software maintenance agreement for a duration of three years for maintenance with annual payments of $14,250 with Pioneer Technology Group, LLC, for an amount of $134,150, plus a contingency amount of $5,000 for possible third-party data and image conversions, for a total not to exceed of $139,150, to be funded from the Capital Projects Fund Software Replacement Account and the General Fund IT Software Maintenance Account, and to authorize subsequent renewals for maintenance in the manner and in the amount described in the software maintenance agreement.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on a motion discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay? Carried. Thank you. All right. We're finishing a little earlier for this, and I've already talked to the district attorney about, you know, whether or not we could take the afternoon session this morning, and we cannot, we cannot. So we're gonna take up item 18, and then we're gonna break until 1:30. When we'll pick up, we pulled 19 Echo, who will take up the items, with the exception of that one, we will take those up at 1:30 this afternoon. All right, board comments? Anybody? Nobody? Nobody?
We're good.
I'd just like to say, on the mayor's challenge for solutions, you know, issues that people, we've gotten seven people who've submitted issues and solutions, and the time is still open. Bloomberg Cities is gonna send out a team of people for a whole day that's gonna work with us about, you know, what, you know, go, help us go through those applications, and help us work through them, and so we'll see where it goes, and we'll pick who goes on to the national. Right, Rachel?
Yep. People visit Carson.org/idea.
Say again?
Carson.org/idea.
Right, okay. All right. And Rachel, thank you for all your work on, what you're doing on this. All right, anybody else? I don't see any, so let's stand in recess until 1:30.